Welcome to the planning board of the town of Deerfield on Monday, May 9th, 2022. And Kathy, will you read our introduction? Kathy Witroba?
Sure, right here. The meeting will be held in a hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person attendance and remote participation in accordance with the Governor Baker's June 16th, 2021 Act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including an extension of the remote participation provisions of his March 20, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A 20. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupting the virtual broadcast, unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. For purposes of this in-person attendance, the town of Deerfield will host the meeting in the main meeting room of the Deerfield Municipal Offices with remote participation details noted below, and there's a link to join the Zoom meeting. That's on the town.
Thank you, Kathy.
That's on the town website.
Right. And a reminder to all that our meeting guidelines are to speak one at a time, follow our Deerfield Code of Conduct, to be respectful, considerate, courteous, and also we want to be concise, non-repetitive, and recognized by the chair. So, board members in attendance, Rachel Blaine?
Here, Rachel Blaine.
Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba here.
Andrea Liebson?
Andrea Liebson here.
Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester here.
Denise Mason?
Denise Mason here.
And Mary Cludier, I think, is on her way. So we'll see when she is in attendance. And Emily Wolfco here. Thank you. Minutes of April 4th. Rachel, do you want to tell us what's happening?
Uh, I thought I sent them. I haven't, sorry. They're ready. I just haven't sent them out. I really thought I sent them last week. So, sorry.
Minutes have a way of doing it.
Minutes are coming. If you want to watch the meeting, it's on YouTube. It was an important meeting, too. So, I apologize.
And under new business now. Public hearing, Anne Mary, could you, oopsie, well, no, Anne Mary, the introduction. Here, let's see. Denise, could you read the introduction?
Notice is hereby given that the Deerfield Planning Board will hold public hearing on May 9th.
Denise, can you speak into the mic a little bit?
Yours is not as good as mine. Got the wrong one.
How's this one?
Hot mic.
That's better.
Notice is hereby given that the Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing on May 9th, 2022 at 7:00 PM on the application from Joshua Catherine Lemay for a special permit for a proposed project to construct a single-family house with the driveway that exceeds 500 feet in length located on Stockbridge Road, Cessers Map 161 Lot 12.1. Meetings are being held in hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person attendance and remote participation. For purposes of in-person attendance, the town of Deerfield will host the meeting in the main meeting room of the Deerfield Municipal Offices at 8 Conley Street, South Deerfield, Mass. 01373. Remote participation noted below.
Thank you. And we will begin, actually, as a little bit of a intro, I have been looking into a little bit more about the regulations as to what we should be saying and doing as we have public hearings. So you'll notice a few more pieces of bureaucracy tonight. But hopefully, it means that things are clear and transparent. I will begin by noting that our public hearing tonight is the application, as Denise mentioned in the public hearing, notice of Joshua and Catherine Lemay for a special permit on the proposed driveway that exceeds 500 feet in length located on Stockbridge Road, map 161 Lot 12.1. The statute that governs our deliberations and decision this evening is Section 3400. In particular, the issues that we, as the planning board especially, are concerned with is that there is reasonable and safe access from the public way to within 100 feet of the building site for vehicles, including but not limited to fire, emergency, and police, and also that there's proper frontage and grade not to exceed 8% in certain areas. Oh, Anne Mary, welcome. Anne Mary, presence. Thank you. The process to be followed tonight is, we will have a presentation by the applicant. Then we will have a discussion presentation of the written or verbal comments by town boards or departments, an opportunity for public comments. We will close or continue the public hearing. But when it is closed, we'll have our deliberations and vote on the application with possible conditions. So, as we begin too, I did check with our building assistants who brought up about our notices, and it is important for us to know that the proper notices were sent and posted to a butters on April 21st, also budding towns and boards and departments on April 25th. The notices were also published in the Greenfield Recorder on April 25th and May 5th, and posted in the Town Hall foyer on April 20th. And all notices did include the date, time, place, and hearing, the names of the applicants, a brief description of the request to be heard, including reference to the applicable statute, and the address and map and lot. So we are all clean with that. Onward. So, our public hearing, I'm not sure, applicants, if you have any overview or statements you'd like to make at the beginning, or you are applicants? I assume, thank you, please come, and if you can identify yourselves and your address, 18 Stockbridge, we thank you.
So I'm Josh Lemay, one of the applicants.
Nice to meet you, thank you.
So we don't really have a presentation, but we filed it. It's a single-family residence on Stockbridge Road. Those driveways a little under 800 feet through an open field like used for agriculture, so there are no access issues.
Thank you. I think that's more than adequate. We did receive your application, which was thorough, and appreciate, appreciate that. In regards to comments from our boards and town departments, the Board of Health and the Fire Department had no concerns. The Highway and Police had no comments, but as we on the board know, that means that it's inferred that there are no concerns. The Conservation Commission did not send us a specific comment in regards to this. However, they did have a notice of intent. They did determine that there were wetlands on the property, but they approved the notice of intent with conditions about that, those wetlands. The Select Board also had no concerns. They did need to address the issue that the property was under 61A, meaning that it's agricultural, horticultural land use with special tax provisions. And when this occurs, the town has, or if there's going to be a transfer or sale of the property to a relative, the town has the right of first refusal to purchase the property. The Select Board has voted to waive their right to purchase the land, freeing it for the sale to the family member. Building Commissioner has stated that the driveway will satisfy the requirements of Section 3430 and will provide safe and reasonable access for fire, police, and emergency vehicles, and has no concerns. Mr. Walden, you're on, I see, do you have any other comments in relation to that?
No, I did not. I mean, we, the Fire Department and I walked the driveway, and we were all satisfied with the access. So, I really have no other comments or concerns.
Thank you, thank you. This is the message of doing your homework before the meeting. Planning Board, do you have any questions of any of the, I guess it would primarily be of the buildings that, and then the other representatives are here this evening?
You got the hot mics. So you said that the Select Board waived that, so is that in writing?
Well, it should be there at least in their minutes, and I imagine it would be in something else, Jen?
Yeah, so they voted it, and so I believe we will have it in the, well, we'll definitely have it in the minutes. But, yeah, and we did have, we did have a letter from the applicant to the Select Board asking for that request.
Good.
Yep.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
I don't know if we have any other expert testimony coming before us this evening. Okay, so, or any public comments now?
There's no comment online.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So what is the closest public way?
Stockbridge Road is a public way.
That's it, that's the big road. Okay.
And what's?
It would go right on.
What's near it? It's Mill, what's it?
It's off of South Mill River.
Okay, okay, I had to orient myself to it. Okay.
So, potentially, if there's no more discussion, could we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. That was Kathy Sylvester, second?
I second that, Denise Mason.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? No. Okay, so we'll call a vote to close the public hearing. Rachel Blaine?
Yes, Rachel Blaine.
Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba, yes.
Andrea Liebson?
Andrea Liebson, yes.
Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Denise Mason?
Denise Mason, yes.
And Anne Mary Cludier?
Anne Mary Cludier, yes.
And Emily Wolfco, yes. So the public hearing is closed. So now for our deliberations, and we will have deliberations, including discussion of possible conditions.
Can I ask a quick question? Sorry, can I ask one quick question? Super out of order. What's the paving? What are you gonna?
It's gravel.
It is just a gravel road. I knew that. Thank you. I did.
It's hard to think and
Yes, right.
write at the same time.
True gum.
It's, in fact, not our role to refute any information presented at the public hearing or to invite additional information for against the application that has the applicant's or opposition's responsibility, not ours. And we need to base our decision on the findings and the applicable laws I mentioned earlier. And obviously, as I said earlier, we can consider conditions. So if we can have our deliberation now?
May I ask a question about what the Conservation Commission got?
Conservation Commission was the one that did determine there are wetlands, and they improved the notice of intent with conditions about the wetlands. And so they're clear with the project going forward.
So they approved the project, but want to make sure that the wetlands are maintained?
Are protected.
Are protected, correct.
So?
Yes, Kathy?
So dated May 3rd, from the Fire Department, it says the Fire Department has no further comment. What does that mean? Like, no further comment? Are they saying it's fine, or is no further comment, meaning they're waiting on something?
No.
No, I think that they're fine, and also, as Mr. Walden mentioned, he did discuss this with them. And they're fine with, again, our primary concern with Fire Department is that there's good access for emergency vehicles. Are there other questions? In terms of deliberation or conditions, one of the conditions that we usually have as a standard condition, then, that I would like us to entertain is that any variation from the plans as submitted be approved by the planning board prior to any commencement of work. Does that seem reasonable?
I think that sounds right. You're okay with that?
Yes.
Good.
Good thing. So as we then entertain a motion, we need to, it seems as if, I mean, our general findings in relation to this is, according to testimony and documents, that there are no objections from butters. Nothing has been said from any of them, no objections from town boards or staff. Our applicable law, Section 3400, does seem to, seems that we have found evidence that there is reasonable, safe access for the vehicles. Apparently, there's okay frontage and grading. We heard no comments or concerns about that. So and then our possible condition of any variation from the plans need to come back to us before there's any work commenced. So, could we have a motion to?
So, I move that we request, that we approve, I request approval for the special permit for construction of a single-family house with a driveway that exceeds 500 feet in length, located on Stockbridge Road, Cessers Maps 161 Lot 12.1 pursuant to our 179 in Section 340 of the Deerfield zoning bylaw with the following condition: Any variation from the plans as submitted must be approved by the planning board prior to commencement of work.
Thank you. And that was seconded by whom?
That was Kathy's second. Yes.
Is there any discussion for the discussion? All right, a quorum or a quorum in voting for us tonight, the majority vote of the people present is the motion would go in whatever direction of the majority vote. So then I will call the question, Rachel Blaine?
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba, yes.
Andrea Liebson?
Andrea Liebson, yes.
Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Denise Mason?
Denise Mason, yes.
And Mary Cludier? And Emily Wolfco, yes. So we pass the special permit.
Congratulations, what an exciting project.
Congratulations on your wonderful driveway.
You may come back and curse us when you will be gone. We meet on Friday nights.
Next on our agenda, we have Chris Curtis discussing some healthy soils zoning initiatives. Mr. Curtis, don't sit down, you come back up. Thank you. Oh, as he's taking his seat, we have started on the planning board conversations about looking at zoning in our town center, and particularly, we've talked about being more walkable, more green, and have more mixed use, among other things. The Green Infrastructure Committee and the MVP Work Group have some interesting ideas, and Chris is going to present those tonight, and that is in relation to some of the conversations that we're starting on town center. Chris?
Thank you. I think most of you know me, but just for anybody that might be watching, I'm the town's MVP consultant, and the town has been working on municipal vulnerability preparedness now for five years. And the current grant that we have has a component in it for healthy soils. And we're looking with, in concert, working with regenerative design, and Keith Salzberg in particular, at the soils in town and what the importance of those soils are for carbon sequestration. And that's a really important component of climate change and protecting us from climate change. So you may recall that Keith and I came before you, once before, a few months back. Keith did a presentation on some of his findings at that point, and he's done some additional work now and really identified which soils in town and mapped them are the most important for carbon sequestration, which ones are the healthiest soils. And if you look at the handout, which I'll be referring to during my discussion here, on the last two pages, there's a couple of maps that Keith produced. Probably the most important one is the soil conservation regeneration value, that sort of blue and green one. And that one shows where those most important soils are. And as you can kind of see from the map, the really high conservation value focuses most heavily on the forested upland areas of Deerfield, which frankly was a little bit of a surprise to me. I wasn't expecting that, but that's what their findings were. And then second most important, well, actually, the most important, which are a little harder to see on the map, were wetland soils. So those are, those are the number one, forested uplands are second. Agricultural soils were third, and then turf soils were the fourth. And agricultural soils show up primarily in sort of brownish color. They have a high soil regeneration value, which from my understanding means that they have a lot of potential for carbon sequestration, but better management practices are needed in order to maximize that. So things like no-till agriculture. So, my job is to work with what kinds of strategies would help the town to preserve and protect the best and most healthy soils in town, and what kinds of strategies are really doable or applicable in a community like Deerfield. And we've come up with a pretty long list of those strategies, which are in the table on the first and second pages. And I'm not going to go through all those, but you might notice that there are some that apply to the planning board as the lead entity, others are more for Community Preservation Committee, Open Space Committee, or Conservation Commission. So, lots of potential involvement of different boards in town. The four that I, the four strategies that I think we want to focus on the most from the perspective of this study are the ones that I'd like to talk to you about tonight and kind of briefly summarize them, and maybe have a little bit of a dialogue with the planning board about these and how applicable and appropriate that you think they might be in town. So those four strategies, which are again summarized in the handout, are transfer of development rights, post-construction soil performance standards, upland forest protection overlay zoning, and then the fourth one is expanded wetland or water resource buffers. That's probably more of a Conservation Commission issue. So I'm going to focus, I think, on, most heavily on the first three. So, starting with transfer of development rights. This is a technique that has been used pretty successfully in communities to protect farmland, in particular, through a mechanism that uses the private development, private development resources to protect farmland and purchase development rights. So you may be familiar with the Agriculture Preservation Restriction Program, which is a publicly funded way to purchase development rights. This is similar to that, except that the development rights are actually bought by a private developer or individual person that wants to do development, and they get protected in the same way. Example of this would be in the town of Hadley. They have a transfer of development rights bylaw, and it's been pretty successfully used over the past, I think it's been 15 years. I actually wrote it, so I should probably know. But it's been set up so that development rights can be purchased in the prime agricultural sections of the community, which are mostly in the north portion and south portion of town. And that the area where they are used is along the Route 9 corridor and the town center. So developers have done that. I think it's been used at least 15 times, to my knowledge. And there's been substantial acreage of farmland protected without any investment of town funds. So that's kind of the advantage to this. And the way it's set up is that a community would set up a sending zone and a receiving zone. And again, as using the Hadley example, the sending zone is that farmland area, receiving zone being the village center and the highway corridor. That could be, in Deerfield, it could be the existing village centers and your existing commercial and industrial districts. And the sending zone in Deerfield could be those areas that we've, again, sort of targeted on the map that I was talking about earlier, the forest upland areas and some of the agricultural areas in town. In the receiving zone, we would need to think about what are the incentives that the town could actually offer to make this happen? There has to be some kind of an incentive. So it's either, you know, improving the ability to develop an existing property by increasing the allowable density, or the lot coverage, or building heights. Could be reducing parking requirements, or some of the setback or other dimensional standards. Or it could be allowing, actually, a new use, which in Deerfield, I think, one of the ideas that I've been thinking a lot about is some kind of a mixed-use zoning, particularly appropriate for the town center, I think, where you could have a mix of commercial and residential uses in the same structure complex and a variety of retail types of uses. It's a way to make that really work with TDR so that someone applying for mixed use would get that as an incentive in return for protecting some land elsewhere in town. So I think this is one of the more exciting ideas, and the reason that I like it is that it doesn't create any new development restrictions. So there's no one that really would presumably be opposed to it because it's not impacting anyone in a negative way. It's really providing an opportunity both for protecting land to the benefit of the property owner, because they would receive payment for development rights, and it would provide an opportunity for those folks that are interested in development in these receiving areas to get some benefits as well. It doesn't force anybody to do anything. It's, you know, it's purely optional. It's something that anyone could decide to partake of or not. So, and it was interesting, in Hadley, you know, again, just to take that example, Hadley is probably one of the toughest communities I've ever worked with in terms of getting zoning bylaws passed. There's a lot of contention in the community, and we actually had, at town meeting, we had both the farmers and the major property owners of commercial development stand up and say that they wanted this bylaw to go forward. And I think it was maybe the only time in Hadley's history that there was sort of agreement about something like that. So, interesting concept, and it would really require, you know, working with the board to think about, again, what are the incentives that could be offered, and what do we feel comfortable with in terms of, increased density, lot sizes, dimensional requirements, et cetera. So maybe I'll just stop there for a second and see if you, or, you know, have questions, or is this making sense to you? Go ahead.
I do have questions. Denise? So you said that a private company can do this. What happens if they decide to sell to those rights? Continue on with the purchase?
The development rights under this scenario would transfer to town. And so they would be permanently held and protected, similar to an APR or a conservation restriction. So there wouldn't be any option for the development company to sell the rights to someone else, if that's what you're asking.
Thank you.
Yes, Anne Mary?
A few years ago, Rachel, maybe you can help me. Max had brought up a question. I wish I could hear his voice in my head right now. Because he said that one of the potential outcomes that he could see would to be inadvertently driving up the price of farmland. And I, at the time, asked questions, but I don't remember. So, I just want to be trying to think about our farmers, too. So I was hoping that that would ring some bells, or if anyone could help me brainstorm how that might be a possibility, because I do remember him saying that, but I don't remember the details. But I don't want to overlook anyone in our community.
Right, the conundrum being that by offering these kind of values to the development rights, then for farmers to buy more farmland. So it protects the farmers that have farmland, but it's not as advantageous? So it protects the farmers that have farmland, but it's not as advantageous for the growing farmer or the younger farmer who's gathering more land per se. I mean, I think that's part of the, that's part of the concern that potentially Max was talking about. I mean, we've just, in Deerfield, we've just approved an APR financing for Ostrowski Farm. So it's not, you know, we're, we're familiar with that kind of idea of buying out the rights. And I, I think for me, I, I really need to hear, you work so hard on a use table and you, you know, you look at, we're going to look at maybe changing, you know. One of the mandates that we had was to really consider Century Village frontage, for example. So that would be for everybody. That's across the board. But what kinds of flexibility would we be able to offer? What, what is, what have these other towns done that has offered developer the incentive to, to make this investment?
Well, again, I think maybe using Hadley as an example. I think there's four or so different districts that are in their receiving zone. And that's the area where the incentives come into play. So in a couple of them, for example, the minimum lot size can be reduced from, there's one where you can reduce it from 15,000 square feet to 12,000 square feet. Set back at the front edge from 120 feet down to 100 feet. Some of the setbacks from 15 to 10. Building coverage goes from 25% up to 35%. Maximum height goes from 35 feet to 40 feet. So those are some examples. Like, you know, there's four different districts and the numbers are different for each one of them. But there's, you know, the potential for using those.
Can I ask you a question mechanically? So you've got these different zones where there are different opportunities for these different height requirements, setback requirements, frontage requirements. So the developer buys the rights to develop in that. They're, they're also property holders there. I mean, they're, they're owning the property and they're saying, I mean, I've been thinking in Hadley of some of these new condos that are going in that are really close to the road, you know, the one, like right on the road and it's enormous. And I have to think that must be, as a zoning person, I'm looking at that going, oh my God. So maybe that's part of it, right?
Yeah, I can't say.
It's right at the bottom. I know, right at the bottom of the hill, new development. And so in a zone, they own the property, they want to go a story taller. And so they buy the rights.
I think those condos are Amherst.
I thought they're right on the line. It's right at the bottom of the hill, because Amherst kind of ends.
Those are Amherst.
Oh, they are. Okay. Other opportunities. Anyway, all I'm saying is that, oh, it might be Amherst is doing the same thing, but.
Affordable housing.
But so what they're, they're, anyway, how does, the mechanics are still beyond me.
Yes, that's the mechanics. If you could explain that a little bit more, Chris. About how.
So in the bylaw, there is a table which sets up a set of formulas. And so, for example, reducing your parking requirements by 20 spaces translates into X amount of square footage that you have to preserve in, in terms of farmland. There's a very specific set of numerical formulas that you, so if you, if you go, if you're, you find a 10-acre parcel of farmland and you buy those 10 development rights, that equals X number of parking spaces, X number of feet of, of increased height. Or, 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 there's, there's all different options and you can combine options. You can get, you know, an increased height plus a reduced frontage. I'd be happy to, you know, if we decide to pursue this further, I'd be happy to share with you an example of how that table works. And actually probably will try to create one for you for Deerfield anyway, because that's part of our project. And you can consider whether you think it might work for, for you all and for town.
May I ask a question? This is Andrea. We have incentives for green development. How does this intersect with those incentives? And how do they differ? I mean, I'm a little confused by.
It's, it's a really good question. And I don't, at this point, really have a total answer for you, because it would really require some analysis to look at the incentives that we have created for green development and make sure that we have some different incentives that might apply here. Although there might potentially be, you might be able to overlap those incentives. You know, someone might want to pursue green development, or they might want to pursue transfer of development rights. You know, you, you could do either or potentially. So I can't tell you exactly with precision which incentives are going to conflict or overlap. Until we get into the table of all of that.
So if someone wanted to, I, I'm, I'm afraid I'm having a hard time understanding how, how this works.
It's complicated.
Agreed. So in order to build in one area, you have to provide a benefit in another place. Am I understanding that correctly?
It's the other way around, isn't it? In order to build like, yes, in the town, you would provide, you would protect land.
Right, somewhere.
Right. So you're drawing away from one area and promoting another.
And why, what is, what is the benefit to the, oh, so it would be these incentives that we would create?
Yeah. It's really what smart growth, you've heard this term before, smart growth is all about, is trying to promote development in and around existing village centers at a higher density to create a more walkable community while preserving and protecting some of the resource areas in the outer areas of the community, maintaining the rural character of the community in so doing. So that's what smart growth is. And that's what, that's what this bylaw accomplishes, really, sort of both ends.
So another question I have about is this forested upland. Who owns it? Is some, a lot of it owned by the state? Certainly where I live it is. So I'm just wondering, how does that interact with all this?
Yeah, well, the publicly owned land is protected, so we wouldn't be worried about that particular land. It's the privately owned land that could be developed and, and really cut up into smaller parcels, reducing the, you know, forest cover and contiguous blocks of forest land that are really valuable at this point. They're valuable not only for healthy soils, but they're also valuable, for example, for wildlife. We have, you know, one of the impacts of climate change is that wildlife is going to be migrating, moving northward, species are going to be changing and having contiguous blocks of forest land are really important for, you know, protecting wildlife habitat. It's also important for carbon sequestration, because the older forests are much more efficient at doing that than anything we could plant today. You know, it takes like 35 years for a tree to get to the place where it's actually making a difference in terms of carbon, carbon sequestration.
Kathy, you said you had a question, and then Kathy?
Yeah, so I, I was just wondering how it worked, like with this last couple, you know, they had land under chapter 61 and now they're paying taxes back so they can actually develop the land that was put in preservation. So what happens if a farmer, you know, the next generation wants to use that land? How do they, or can they somehow backtrack?
Let me see if I can try to understand your question. And it's interesting about chapter 61A, first of all. The reason chapter 61A is set up is to preserve farmland, not just temporarily, but ideally long-term. So frankly, it's a little disappointing that the town is turning around and, and not purchasing the 61A lands that are, are getting released, because there should be funds available for doing that. That's part of what our CPA money is set aside for. And we should be using it to protect these lands. 61A, again, it's not set up as, as just a revolving door to get, give people a tax break. It's supposed to be to protect farmland in the long haul. So to answer your question, under, under this program, we would be purchasing development rights in perpetuity. So the farm can remain in the hands of a farmer. They get some money to reinvest in their properties and hopefully make their farm more viable. The land gets protected for the long term and it's not like 61A. It's, it's permanently protected. I don't know if that answers the question, but that's.
Yeah, and there's no backdoor.
No, no. Well, let me answer that question completely. The, the truth is that the state legislature can vote to allow the release of a preservation restriction, but I don't think it's happened ever before, very rarely.
It's not the same as APR.
It is the same as APR, yeah. So that would take, something special would have to have happened to require, to get that to happen.
Any other questions?
I'm still like getting a grip on this. So, so the mechanics table, so we're incentivizing. And so some of the issues with building closer into town is that there's these requirements and these requirements make it difficult for an individual to build and develop in a manner that suits what they're seeking. But it seems to me like this table needs to be out first, right? Like we have to make those incentives present first before, so that that's what people are looking for as opposed to looking somewhere else.
I mean developers.
I mean.
Private developers.
Yeah.
Or private entities.
It seems like we need to, that's almost a starting point, right? Like this is what we're going to offer you. This is what it looks like. These are the areas that are available for that. And it's like a promotion. It's like a marketing before we're trying to detract somebody, we're, we're attracting them.
Well, and I'm looking at Alex too. Maybe Alex, do you have any sense for people, business people who are looking into Deerfield who are saying, gosh, I would develop in town if I could go three stories or if I could have a mixed use? I mean, I'm just saying, like, what is the, what is the reality on the ground? Not that, I mean, if you build it, they will come. I'm not saying we have to have some hot person. But what kinds of business developers, business owners would, do we have anything like that, that they're just squat at the door saying, if only your rigs were favorable to me? Just curious.
You have to go to the microphone if you're speaking.
Sorry, I just, I'm just asking if there was any.
I meant Alex. I could hear you.
He said no. That was the answer.
I also want to make one comment, if I may.
Yes, Jen?
Chris was saying that the, he wished the town would have used their right of purchasing the 61A. I want to just say on this case, it was a family member. The town decided that it wasn't a close enough family member to just have it by right, that they did want to do the right of first refusal process, because it was a nephew. So it's family land.
And it's not protected. It's just was, was the tax status with 61A.
Correct.
Yeah, I, you know, I think it just in general that, that I was trying to make reference that that's what 61A is for, is to try to more permanently protect.
Yeah, I think that that's probably what they thought before and then life happened. So I just.
State, I mean, that's a state tax status. That's not, that's not the town per se, is it? Right?
You have the right to purchase it before, because they had that.
Tax status. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is a good discussion. And I think maybe it ties into what Chris initially was wondering about is whether or not there's enough interest to go back and talk with the Green Infrastructure Development Committee and to start exploring this more so that potentially you could bring back some proposed table of use, the overlay district, the, the bylaws. Yeah.
Yeah. I think I'm trying to take the temperature of the planning board a little bit to see whether there's interest. But this is something that, again, is part of the grant. We will be producing some model bylaws for your consideration and you can decide to pursue them or not. But I mean, I think it's helpful for me to get a sense of, you know, is this an idea that you have some interest in?
Right.
This is Andrea. So the, the mixed-use zoning would develop out of this. And we know that that's.
Could.
To be.
Could.
Develop. And we know that that's of great interest to planning board members.
Town. Or parking or trees or, I don't know. Yeah, it depends on what the incentives would. Could be.
You know, there's a dual benefit here, but if you have the mixed-use development as one of the incentives. Because the town center could really benefit from some infusion of, of new growth and development and, and mixed use would bring people downtown. It would potentially upgrade, you know, the look of the downtown with some, some new development here. You know, there, there's really a lot of, a lot of benefits that could be had from doing that. That would require having a mixed-use component to this bylaw, which is, is some work to do as well. But I think it's, it's, it's good work and worthwhile.
Yes, sorry. Yes, Jen?
With, Chris, I have a question for Chris. Would, would that mixed use also be for other parts of town if the board decided that way, not just downtown?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that, that could be, you know, in, in other districts as well, if the board feels that's appropriate, you know.
Yeah. I mean, I feel that, that that's important, depending on the, the zone that it, that people would want. I mean, there was somebody that, you know, wanted to have a project, let's just say it was at Magic Wings. And they wanted to use one of the other buildings and have a mixed use, but it's not allowed in that area. So they would have the business and then the residential part. And the way our bylaw is today, it wouldn't be allowed. So in that situation, you know, I think it's, it's really worth looking at as a board to, to put mixed use into, into our bylaw.
I'm understanding that this could be potentially some overlay districts and various, for those contiguous, contiguous or not.
Right. The receiving zone is essentially the zoning overlay district. And it could be comprised of, you know, multiple areas in town. So Jen's example, I think, is a good one.
Chris, you had mentioned these other two areas that might be important for us. And we had talked also about having 15, 20 minutes.
Yes.
We could probably keep you here all evening, however, then what would we do with Andrea's fees? So how would you like to proceed? Would you like to try to, would you like to come back to us on some of these other things? You want to go forward with the conversation that we've had right now in terms of the transfer of development rights? And.
Well, yes, to, to both of those questions.
Okay.
I, I would like to, you know, I, I'm getting a, a positive sense on the, on the TDR. The other two might require another, you know, half an hour worth of discussion to explain and, and get across.
Yes.
Another time.
Good.
That, yeah.
All right. Good. Thank you. And I think that planning board, as, as you know, we're doing a work group for our accessory apartments. And if at some point you decide to have a work group comprised of a number of different parts of town, we could probably twist someone's elbow here to be part of that. Good.
Great.
Good. Thank you very much. To be continued, yes. Picture's worth a thousand words. Thank you. Alrighty. Thank you. Next on our agenda, somewhat brief, but potentially impactful. As you received in the mail, we did receive a notice on, well, after April 25th from the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, that they are looking at the town's, well, this is, DHCD is from Massachusetts, Boston, our state. They're looking at our housing subsidized housing inventory or SHI. We've got a lot of back names today. That, the, the letter states that we need to look at the attached subsidized housing inventory. And of course, it was not attached to reply by June 4th as to whether or not there are any corrections, additions, discussion. This is very much tied into. This is very much tied into our Deerfield Housing Production Plan. Interestingly, again, it, it's based on the twenty-ten census, not the twenty-twenty census, and I, we did receive some backup information about, or there is some information, actually in our planning binders, I found our, our twenty-ten hous- housing inventory, but not the subsidized housing inventory. So I spoke some with Casey. Um, she is, I, I, it's, it's, the letter went to the zoning board, us, um, her, and so she's going to, I, I was wondering whether or not the select board actually would take the lead on this, since it impacts a number of different boards. So um, she said that she would bring that to the select board, and I, in fact, then just followed that up today with a request to be on the agenda for the select board. I think it's the May eighteenth. Meeting that the select board could then discuss how they want to approach this lack of the attached housing inventory, and also that there needs to be a response by June fourth. I, I, I would probably say that my, my, if I say much of anything in this like word discussion, it would be that certainly the planning board wants to support both the writing of the response, however we can, but also the the actualization to see what we can do to actually make some, some progress in that. And I'm not sure what that would be, other than addressing some of our zoning bylaws. Um, in previous presentations and fur cog, um, part of the discussions that I think would be persuasive to the town is looking at accessory dwelling apartments, um, allowing two-family in our RA district. Allowing more three-family units, multifamily units, um, and, and incentivizing affordable housing, potentially maybe incentivizing even as we were just talking. Not quite sure how that could be, but in any event. So I think there are some things that are in our wheelhouse, um, although certainly we're not gonna be building affordable housing ourselves. That's Denise.
Questions. First one is, so I, I forget who I was talking, you know, after hearing this, and it's my understanding that neighboring towns are not meeting that requirement also. And the second part is, what is the enforcement? And the third part is, would senior housing, the proposed friendly forty-B senior housing, would that constitute affordable housing?
My understanding is, uh, going backwards, that definitely subsidized senior housing, um, would count. Um, in terms of other towns, I think, um, some are quite diligent about trying to monitor that and others are concerned that they're not at their ten percent threshold. And your third question.
Well, the enforcement.
Oh, yeah, well, I was looking, I was trying to find that. And I couldn't find, you know, I tried, I looked up forty-B and, you know, talks about what's non-compliant, and it, I don't know what the T. I, I, I don't, I don't know, other than I, I guess it would tie into not necessarily looking at what the enforcement problems.
A lot of times.
Let's see what we can do.
The enforcement isn't, well, there's enforcement from the state, but there's also unfriendly development. That's another kind of enforcement moment, where unfriendly development comes into town and then triggers the so that was, at least when we were creating the housing, um, plan, development plan before, that, that was the threat that, that was the sort of Damocles over our head.
Right, and my understanding with an unfriendly forty-B is that they come in and there are a lot of our zoning laws that they don't need to comply with. And so we would want instead to be able to have our own subsidized housing.
And that's the thing with the senior housing, when, when they were discussing it before, what were called the friendly forty-B, which was where they would work with the townspeople, the town boards. Still, they would have kind of these exemptions because we, our housing inventory production plan isn't, and we haven't hit the threshold. So a friendly forty-B is great, better than unfriendly one.
Right, and I, I would expect that if we're able to show that we've got the plans for the senior housing, if we're working on
Toward.
Accessory apartments, if we're also maybe considering some of the two-family, three-family initiatives.
That was what Alyssa's, it, it, that was her signal to us all those years ago, when Paul and I were on that committee, was that the plans that you make count in your favor. I mean, even as you're moving glacially toward it, you've got you, you've got your sight on the horizon, and that, that was what we were really pushing with, for with the accessory housing considerations.
So, again, to be continued, but um, we might, that, that, as we were talking about setting our own agenda, it might be that our agendas are being set for us. Yes.
So, um, like, do we know how many private section eight apartments, housing units?
No, that, I think that's what was supposed to be attached. I mean, we know, but I, I, I think, um, our goal, um, according to the two thousand and ten census was that we have to have at least thirty, um, because we have three thousand and odd actual housing, houses.
Inventory, units in the inventory.
Yeah, so, and we're supposed to have ten percent. So that would be thirty. So I, I don't know where we are in relation to thirty.
Well, I mean, I, I, so we have Elm Circle, we have the group home on Eastern Avenue. So there are things that we definitely know, but I'm curious if there's private, privately above the day luther. So there's an apartment above the day luther, it's a section eight apartment. There's, there's a few apartments on South Main Street that are section eight. There was a house that sold a little while ago, but that was a section eight housing. So I'm curious if, I guess my question is, can an individual rent out an apartment in a building they own as section eight without it being registered with?
Well, that's a very good question. Can you come on me?
Annely?
Yes.
Anne Mary had asked me this a long time ago, and did I ever give you that listing, Anne? No. Okay, so I have it somewhere in my piles. I called around to the different housing authorities, as well as a couple of the other places that had affordable houses that, that you mentioned, Rachel, that I'm not recalling, and I, I came up, but this number's just coming up in my head, like thirty-five units. And I was waiting for some of the other housing authorities to get back to me, but we were in the midst of COVID. And I, let me look into it more, because I started to, Anne Mary had asked me this question a while ago, and I started to call around and see what our inventory actually looked like. So they're not per se registered with the town of Deerfield, but they have to be associated with a program that then.
Yes, I think that makes them official.
Right.
Right. I, I think, uh, Jen, that will be research well, time well spent, because.
I've done it, and it's somewhere, and I was reading. Yeah, waiting for other boards, so, um, committee, I mean, housing authorities to get back to me. Because some, some of the housing authorities, like, so let's say you go to the Northampton Housing Authority, and they have a, a apartment that's section eight in Deerfield. So that's how, you know, so I went to the Greenfield one and the Amherst one, because we don't have our own housing authority. So, but they register properties that are in Deerfield. So that's why I was trying to find housing authorities in other towns that had properties that were in Deerfield.
Excellent, excellent. Okay. Well, again, hopefully it will be on, um, the May eighteenth select word meeting, cuz otherwise I think their meeting is after June fourth or something like that. So, and whether or not June fourth, how? That's all that is, but in any event, great. Good. Um, can we try not to, um, have individual conversations? Rachel, did you have something?
I, I, this was Andrea. I was asking if, uh, that's my bad, if the Franklin Regional Housing Authority would have such a listing.
Yes.
We just need to get the listing, uh, Anne Mary, and then Kathy, did you have something? No?
Well, my question is, could, oh, sorry, sorry, it's Kathy. Could there be different listings by town, right? So Northampton maybe has some listings, but maybe Amherst has some listings.
That's right, so that's why I called.
Regional authority. That's what I meant.
That's what you have to go through there.
That was the question.
What I, I was a section eight landlord for a brief time, so my renter found their own, um, listing, right? Whatever apartment happened to fall under the criteria of enough bedrooms for enough rent that it was, it could be considered a section eight housing, and then they would go to whoever gave them their benefits, whether it was out of Springfield or Northampton or Greenfield. And so that's why it's registered there and not with us. Cuz they go through their, where their services are given.
Sure.
So they don't have to go through Greenfield, they can go through Springfield, but end up renting here, but still get their benefits from, through the Springfield office.
And that's where the records kept.
Correct.
So really, we're looking for an aggregate, but that, that, that whole number could be through like ten different municipalities.
Correct.
Or more, or more.
Section eight is, you could take it across the country, isn't that right? So it could be originate anywhere.
Oh, boy. All right, Jen, you've got your. Yes, Denise.
Okay, so in that case, it sounds like that, I mean, that's a lot of research, and that's continual research in order to meet this goal. So is that something that the town could say any section eight needs to register with the town? To make it easier? I mean, and with the, you know, with the housing authorities say, yeah, that's great, we wanna do this, but we need to know. And that, that way, we wouldn't have to go chasing these numbers.
I honestly don't know how that works, because.
I think that's a good question to ask, would make our lives a lot easier.
So who would they register with, given that we have no housing authority? I think, I mean, we, we, we wouldn't, the problem is, of course, it would have to be volunteer.
Or, or at least go to the Franklin, you know, regional housing.
That's what I think.
At least, at least just do that, have an ad, you know?
But honestly, that's a kind of a, it's a difficult process, because how would the each individual housing authorities even know? And it may not even be a housing authority, it may be in, I don't know, I don't know how.
Or if it's like Anne Mary was saying, individuals.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So I don't know, because I mean, it would have to be, um, and we don't even have an apartment inventory.
I was just gonna say, was it, were we also, this was one of the ADU things that we, that we might be scooping up at the same time, was to create an inventory, an apartment inventory.
Right.
So that we had some sense of what apartments were available in our town, just.
I mean, that's, that's opening up a whole different ballgame. I mean, you know, it's like if you register your apartment in Deerfield, you could probably have a checkbox. But, I mean, I was hired as the rental, first rental permitting person in Amherst, so they charged a hundred pers- hundred dollars per application, per, didn't matter if you had two hundred and fifty units or one unit. You had to register your property, and that was my first job in Amherst. So they had to meet criteria for their apartments and register that we knew that they had a owner, they had maintenance people, they had a bunch of criteria, and they paid a hundred dollars. Yeah, it would, you know, you had this checklist that you had to go through. So, I mean, it would be a way. I don't know how we would have the staff and, you know, person power to, to manage that, because, I mean, but it would be a way to get inventory.
And was there a good compliance in Amherst?
Very good. I mean, they had to, but it, um, but it also came for all in-law apartments, had to be registered. Everything. And so we found like tons of illegal apartments, but the, you know, you had an entire, one whole building inspector position, that we, there was five building inspectors. You know, to, to go and to, you know, look at these illegal apartments and.
Well, I imagine as Jen is, um, just looking for our subsidized housing inventory, uh, it will be Pandora's box that will present other opportunities for, um, sort of spitting up our, our bylaws and our internal processes.
But if you had something else that it wasn't like a, a charge, like we weren't inspecting it or having a whole, you know, another whole ballgame, but you had to register your apartment with the town as far as if it was I don't know, rental or section eight, you know, like we had little checkboxes. I'm just sort of thinking out loud, like how we could do this without it people getting scared away from more fees and more regulation, or, I don't know. Just so that we could then have an inventory of what we actually have in town, which is probably way more than we even know.
Right, Anne, and Mary, and then maybe we should try to.
Yeah, I don't wanna belabor the point, but I think if we make it really burdensome for people to provide affordable housing, we're gonna be able to provide less affordable housing. So I guess I don't wanna get too mired down and.
Absolutely.
This is a good first step, is to actually try to find out what do we have now, and then, um, and then we'll take it from there. Um, Andrea, and then.
Yes, I was gonna ask whether or not there is a census of housing stock period, so homes, apartments.
Well, that's what, I mean, what was.
That's what we were supposed to.
In our planning binder, I, cuz I didn't bring it with me, there is a, um, a, yeah, statement that we have something like three thousand twenty-two housing units as of the twenty-ten census.
That's all the ones that we know of, that.
Right, but that was, yeah, that's what the state is considering our housing census is, and so we have to have ten percent of that is supposed to be subsidized housing.
I'm just thinking with the, um, the town census that we have to do regularly for voting purposes, et cetera. Do we ask, you, you know, where, do you live in a house, an apartment, or?
You have a section eight. I guess the question is, what's the pro, con, like, what's the incentive for people to come forward with it? Does it alter their tax base, their property tax, their? You know what I'm saying? Like, is there, is there incentive to stay in the shadow, or is there incentive to come forward and say, this is what I have? Like, what is offered?
Well, these might be good questions, especially if you find that we're under our uh, ten percent, and we wanna be bushes and find out, wait a second, are there other ones there that, um, you don't know about?
It's my, in my experience, that people would rather not say if they have apartments because of their tax rate, or, you know, declaring, um, whatever it is, it's it's multi-layered, so.
All right, well, another one to be continued. Sure. Um, and this one was a, to be continued. Um, next on our agenda is uh, discussion of the Mullen Rule. Um, one of the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative, CPTC webinars that I attended, did mention that only board members who attend and hear evidence at all sessions of a public hearing can vote, with the exception being the Mullen Rule. And, uh, so Denise and I were scratching our heads about Mullen Rule, and Denise has followed through with some information, um, in regards to Deerfield and our Mullen Rule exception.
Yeah, so I found out, I'd, I'd asked Casey this question, Casey and Jen, and then I had another conversation with her, and apparently let's see, in order for that to be in effect for the town, it has to be voted in and accepted, and it was on April thirtieth, twenty-seventeen, Article twenty-five. So it's the Mullen Rule procedure, it's available to, for use by the board. Um, and there's also. Any, yeah, our board, any, any board, select board, across, across the board. And so there's, there's an actual, um, document that, that you fill out, so if you weren't here, if you weren't at one of the meetings, I think it's just one meeting, if you weren't there, then you do have to fill out a form attesting that you have, you know, listened to the Zoom, you've looked at the minutes, and that you're familiar with it enough. And it also that it was not a really substantial meeting, that there was a lot of information that you missed.
Okay.
So I do, I mean, I have.
Excellent, so, um.
We're, we're covered.
So what we need to do is make sure that we get this in our binders, and also mentally distributed to all of us, and thank goodness for the, uh, big public hearing playing fields parks that we've got before us. Everyone here has attended either virtually or in person, all of the hearings.
But even then, so, and you just, what we need is to have a folder with the. But even then, so, and you just, what we need is to have a folder with the format. We used to, we've used these before.
I'll send this on to Annalee. I think this, I think this happened when we were dealing with Dollar General.
No, it happened, it was before then.
Oh, it was before then? Okay.
So this is to justify your vote, that you are.
Right.
That's not.
Right, to justify your vote.
I never did it, but.
Did your homework for the one meeting that you missed for a public hearing. Excuse me, um, do you have a question?
I, so.
Yes, we're trying to not have on the side comments.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm wondering if I had missed the public hearing when I was agreed.
No. Yeah, we've had a few off and on, so we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a question?
Yes, Kathy?
So if you haven't, if we haven't been sworn in, like if we haven't been sworn in, we vote on anything right now? I haven't been sworn in yet, I haven't gotten.
So you're abstaining.
Abstaining, I just think.
Yep, I remember that.
Oh, so you have to be re sworn in and congratulations.
Yes.
I just talked into my head.
Push you down. It's going in.
I know, I will. For reelection, you have to be sworn in each time?
Yes.
Yeah. But I just haven't been, I was like, what?
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, and again, congratulations. Very exciting, yes.
Crazy people.
Um, and somewhat related to that, um, this is, this is a very quick agenda item. Um, I did send out, um, a, sort of a new sheet. It was surprising how many, maybe not surprising, how many different boards and committees, um, many of us, all of us are on either through appointment or election. And in general, um, as you could see from the, um, from the grid that I sent out, most of these terms are renewed in June. So at our June 6th meeting, um, we'll plan on having reappointments for, appointments for our different committees and also elections of our officers. So, um, please individually let me know if there's a committee you'd like to be on or if there's a, an office that you would like to hold and, um, uh, and also I will maybe try to talk with each of you, kind of like a, an annual assessment, how, what's going well for you? What, what, would you like to see, here's our annual performance review here. Get so bureaucratic, but, um, so I look forward to talking with you and also think about um, other committees and groups and ways you can continue to be strong members of the planning board. Um, old business. Uh, and we're moving into Andrea's long awaited fee schedule. Andrea? Um, and, and really as a, um, I mean, preceding intro for that, uh, way back when we did, um, start with our, some of our initiatives, what are things we'd like to do? Some would be zoning bylaws and whatnot, and then others are processes. And we've, we've checked off a number of those processes, but looking at our fee schedule was, um, one that I know that town has requested and that we wanted to do too. So Andrea?
Yes, thank you to Denise and, um, and to Jen for working on this with me. We compared the fees charged by several towns to our own fee schedule and, uh, thought about whether or not they should be changed. We are supposed to look at these things annually. I believe it's been a while, uh, but we are now looking at them. Um, the table that I sent to everybody shows, um, uh, what, when I said, I, a column that says Deerfield recommended, which in fact is perhaps recommendations, um, that I have received from people and, and with my input and, uh, and these are basically my recommendations that we would need to vote on. But again, I had input from a variety of sources, including the building inspector, including Jen, and looking at these other towns' fees. So there are not many changes that we believed would be necessary, with, um, the exception of the definitive subdivision and modification to a definitive subdivision. I did ask how often does this come up? And it's not that often, but it does happen occasionally and we were wildly, uh, lower than most of the other towns. And so, um, it was, um, you know, suggested that we increase the, uh, the fee. Um, I, I believe that, um, it would be easier to do $100 per lot when I talked to, um, Bob, you know, Inspector Bob about, um, figuring out the additional little fee, you know, the $10 per 100 square feet. We looked at the condos, uh, the Snowberry condos, and every lot was a different size.
Yeah.
And so we started doing, um, averages and it just seemed onerous. And so I, and since other towns just said $100 per, per lot, I thought that that would be, um, a more expeditious way of determining fees, thus the change. And then there's a question about the modification to a definitive subdivision. And right now we had been playing, we've, we've been charging nothing and we think that that's not appropriate, especially given other towns are charging that a lot more than nothing. And then the, um, the, it, the thing to think about is that this is not a moneymaker for the town or for the planning board specifically, because the money becomes the planning board, but it's, um, recognition of the time it takes for administrative help. Not just, sometimes our work, uh, if we go to, um, you know, a site plan review or if we, um, take the time to travel to a place where a special permit is used and since we are volunteers, our time is not exactly charged, but, uh, others, you know, staffers for the town do spend time and time is money. And so it costs, uh, something. So that is why, um, why we have fees period and why we thought that the fees that were here would be appropriate. Given that there are not changes to anything except the definitive subdivision and the modification to a definitive subdivision, we would have to hold a hearing. If we change any of these fees, we'd have to have a public hearing. And so I wonder if planning board members are, would be in agreement with this and if so, then we would need to set up a public hearing.
Maybe if we could see first for site plan review or if we can go through these, there aren't too many. We're saying, um, $250 for site plan, but plan review plus $10 per 100 square feet. Are people.
Right.
Comfortable with that? We're the only ones that seem to have the square foot.
Right. And if we would decided we wanted to add, um, per lot or if we wanted to remove the, the, um, the additional charge beyond the 250, we could do that.
So what's the reason for the additional?
I can't.
Discriminating between a bigger project and a smaller project, I think. You know, a smaller project, no big deal. A bigger project? That's more, you know that there's more involved, there's more involved, right? More involved generally.
Part of my confusion and maybe this, you know, we should discuss this 10 per, $10 per 100 square feet, is it's often disturbed.
Yeah.
Property and like, what constitutes disturbed? Is it, if you have a big lot and it's where the house is going, is that the area that's disturbed or is the whole? So either we could think about, um, removing this extra part, the $10 per 100 square feet or saying total lots, $10, $10 or $100 per lot, I don't.
Except that it's not a lot, I mean, that's, that's not about lots, you know, whereas subdivision's about lots, that makes it different, so.
So perhaps we should, we could think about.
Denise has got some.
No, I was just gonna say, you know, I mean, talking about disturbed, it's like, once again, who enforces that? You know, is Bob gonna go out there and say, and, and measure how much did you disturb? So we're gonna charge you X amount? I would just do a flat fee. Or per lot.
So raise it?
I think that it's way too complicated.
Yeah, so maybe, so we should, you know, that, I have to say, I didn't, I, um, I didn't think that.
All right. For, I remember when it came up over solar and we, like, you gotta have this great big solar, right? But the only disturbed property with, that's where the hole.
Yes, I mean, in fact, these have been in place since 2008 and, um, to my knowledge are 250, which is more than everybody else is, hasn't been problematic. So we would keep it at 250, but without that $10 per 100 square foot, is that what people are tending towards?
And I would guess the same would be, uh, case with special permits.
So other towns don't have any kind of, uh, for, like, for larger, no?
So as Andrea says, for a special permit, we want to have that also be the same, that field is a little bit more, others are less, same, I don't know.
You know.
250? And then take away the $10 per 100 square foot?
I think to be consistent, yes.
Consistent, yeah, all right, thank you.
It's simpler.
Okay.
Sometimes it's good.
A and R at 100 plus $50 per lot. Now, for an A and R, the lots are fairly clear, right? I mean, it's, that's what's happening, they're changing it into.
One or two or.
Two.
Two into one, that's the problem, that's when it goes the other direction.
So people seem okay with that?
I think so. I don't think we're gonna run into a big issue with A and Rs.
Okay. And then preliminary subdivision, um, we're the, we're not quite the lowest, but we're quite low. Preliminary subdivision, that's just when, what.
So that, so Jen could probably answer this, this is what Jen and talk about.
I'm here.
Um, start, you know, it's the initial planning for a subdivision and, um, then Jen says to them, do you have this and do you have that? Do you have this information? So she, it's before it actually reaches us, I, if I'm understanding correctly.
Oh, like the pre.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we do the pre-submitting meeting and then it's all the butters notices and then it's the, you know, it's like Bob's time for making sure everything's on the plans and, um, there's just a lot more entailed with the subdivisions.
So the range seems to be 25 to 300.
It, it's, I'd say, I mean, they're making money, it's their business. It's not like, it's a cost of doing business. And the cost of doing business is engaging our townspeople and making sure that they're doing it the right way. I mean, I, I don't know that we have to go to the top of the line, but I, I don't see any reason to do that.
What would you suggest? Because it, this is the preliminary stuff, so once they just have a definitive subdivision, then they're paying the, the $500, plus $100 a lot.
Uh huh. So $200 and then that puts their foot in the door.
So how much?
Okay, so this is for.
200 and there's not any plus extra?
Well, the, the extra is if consultants are, need to be.
And then that's.
And that's part of our, um, uh, our usual process anyway. We have to hire consultants to.
Peer review their, their work.
They have to pay, they, uh, the supplier has to pay for that. Or, um, if we want a, um, a second opinion or a review of their, um, their consultants and it costs us something, that cost would be borne by them as well.
So it's not like 200?
200, okay.
Sold.
Uh, and the definitive subdivision, it's, it's to make it more in line with other towns. And the modification.
Well, wait, 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 definitive, I mean, I'd say more than 200, everything else, there's 500, 500, 500.
500.
500.
For definitive subdivision.
Right. Right, 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 and, and.
Are they in line?
Oh, well, I have a different one.
Yeah, so there's Deerfield recommend.
Well, there we go. Mine's older, I guess. Okay, so 500?
That's what we said, plus $100 per lot.
Yeah. Cool, okay. Plus $100 per lot. Okay, okay. Okay.
The chair says, cool.
That's acceptable.
Okay.
And, and as I said, we were not charging anything for a modification to a definitive subdivision and everybody else was, or many towns were. And so we thought that was appropriate. And one town is charging subdivision regulation, we are not quite sure what that is. And so, is that an ongoing fee? I don't know.
Do you know, Jen?
$15, so it's, it's.
I don't know. What town was that? I don't have it in front of me.
Greenfield for subdivision regulation.
I don't know.
Yeah.
And no one else has done it.
Let's just not do it.
So I can, I can submit these numbers to everyone so that they have a final.
Thank you.
Version.
And then.
And then we would need to talk about, uh, having a public hearing.
Well, or, I mean, I think we could, um, there's not that many numbers here right now if we wanna, um, vote on it and then probably have the public, vote, have a public hearing on June 6th. We have our May 19th as, um, the playing fields park.
I will not be here.
Part of me.
I will not be present on June 6th, just so you know, you can do it, I'm just saying.
It sounds like. Jen, did you say that Casey wasn't going to be here too?
Casey leaves on Tuesday or Wednesday, but she doesn't necessarily come to planning board meetings, so I don't know if, because I won't be there if she's, she's on, we're both on vacation. We planned it really, really well this year, um, the same week.
I think we should be fine for June.
Yeah.
June 6th. So Andrea, if you wanna just go, um, actually, if you wanna make a motion to.
Do I get to make a motion?
Prove it and state the fees that you, that we discussed.
I move that we adopt the following fees for the different, um, things that the, the planning board, um, can, can charge fees for.
Application.
I'm sorry?
Application.
Applications, these are for applications. So, uh, site plan review, $250. Special permit, $250. A and R, $100 plus $50 per lot. Preliminary subdivision, $200 plus cost of mess, of consultants if necessary. Definitive subdivision, $500 plus $100 per lot. Modification to definitive subdivision, $250.
Do you have a second?
I second it, Kathy Sylvester.
Thank you. Um, any discussion?
Good work.
Good job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so let's have a call to question, Rachel Blaine.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Kathy Wutrowa.
Kathy Wutrowa, yes.
Andrea Leibson.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Whoopsie doopsie, okay.
Andrea Leibson, yes.
Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Denise Mason.
Denise Mason, yes.
Anne Mary Cludier.
Anne Mary Cludier, yes.
And we're for, yes, thank you very much.
Annalee, can I just, for the record, I really didn't, I mean, I was at one meeting, but Andrea really did the bulk of the work with Jen, so thank.
Yes, thank you, but thank you.
Andrea did it.
And you're voted to do it next year again. Apparently we have to do it every year.
And one of the things.
We don't always have to change the numbers.
Exactly.
One of the things we also noticed as we're looking at this is, um, that we have, one, two, three, four, six pages of regulations governing fees and fee schedules that also was adopted May 5th, 2008. And it's, uh, quite a bit of, um, you call it governmentees legally. And so, um, actually moving into one of our, actually our next discussion.
Before we leave it, so once we've had our, um, our hearing, we will also have to change this, the regulations governing fees and fee schedules, we'll, we'll have to, um, vote on updating this.
Yes.
At that meeting?
Whenever.
After the public hearing.
After the public hearing and after we have, um, had a final, um, vote on this.
Are you thinking then that we should not put our new fee schedule in, into place until we have this document updated?
No, I think we have to first have the, um, public hearing.
Right, right, right.
And then, once we have, you know, voted on this for a final time after the public hearing, then this will, that document will also need to be updated because it lists the fees on the second page.
So wouldn't it also make sense, unfortunately, that this needs to be part of the public hearing?
What document? What document are you looking at?
I'm looking at the site plan review application packet, two hundred sixty-three, attachment six.
There's all those things too, but what I'm looking at also is in section eighteen point seven of our planning board binder is a six-page document of regulations governing fees and fee schedules and.
So that should be part of the hearing.
So.
Actually, let me check with counsel on that because we have several different locations that our fees are in, just want to make sure that we are updating them in the appropriate place during this hearing.
Right, we would have to update all the fee application sheets.
Yep.
So potentially then perhaps what we need to do as our only other agenda item on May nineteenth is just an update as to whether or not we can have the public hearing governing just the fee numbers without also updating this fee regulation.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'd have to check on that.
Okay, thank you, Jen. I don't think we have to vote on the date for the public hearing anyway, but at least we got the numbers down.
But yeah.
I don't think so, because actually, I mean, I think that going through the six pages, I've just skimmed this, it's quite complex, I don't know how much of this is still necessary, I mean, this is from two thousand eight, so I don't know if we potentially need some assistance with this or.
Right, these are planning board regulations, do we, yeah, do we have to have the public understand that, yes.
Seems like it, yeah, so maybe we're not quite there yet, but hey.
So Jen, you will, you will follow up on that and let us know.
Yes.
Thank you.
All righty, and tied into that, as I think everyone here knows that with our town meeting results, we did, the town did vote to approve our eleven thousand dollar request for assistance for a planning technician, consultant, planning technician, so very, very happy that that's a step in the right direction, hopefully for getting a full-time planner, I did talk with Casey about the PBCP contract, that would be the next, the people that we are anticipating, we will have the technician from Pioneer Valley Planning Corporation, and Jen gathered some information on other contract, contracts and scope of work for a planning technician, so Casey suggested that Jen and I move forward to draft the contract and the scope of work, seems that the planning board, we've had a lot of, I mean, this is good, we've had a number of conversations already about some of our desired initiatives and priorities and whatnot, so I think we've got a good, a good start on that as a group, my, I would anticipate that Jen and I have some conversations that we would come back potentially at the June sixth meeting for the planning board to review the draft, scope of work and contract.
After June sixth.
Pardon me?
You said after June sixth.
Oh, no, at June sixth, because hopefully July first is when we can get started, because it, it was approved, I mean, we can get started whenever, but yeah, yeah, so, so if in the meantime, if you have any other burning issues that you think weren't given the proper ear in some of our previous discussions, please let either Jen or I know, you know, so we can consider and, you know, entertain that for the scope of work and the contract that we then need to bring back, Denise.
Yeah, just a question, so, so if we, we use their services, then they'll be looking at all the zoning bylaws and the master plan that we have, so that we'll be able to, they'll be able to help us prioritize and move forward?
That, if that's what we decide is in the scope of services.
That's what we ask.
Yes, we have to determine.
Yeah, right, so we're determining what falls under the purview of the plan. So Stephanie, what is the number of hours of budget?
Well, it's, it's eleven grand and I think that we should get that, Jen, didn't we, that's only about eighty hours, which is like two and a half hours a week, so we're going to have to really be very disciplined with how we can, and I think from that standpoint, you know, as we're thinking about, you know, update the master plan for five hours.
Well, you know, my, my thoughts are looking at the master plan because there are five different segments to the master plan and so we should really take a look at that and prioritize what needs to be updated first and in my mind, you know, probably economic development would be one of the top things to do, so, you know, so I think the more we can focus in, the more we can.
Absolutely, yeah, so those will be the kinds of things that I think, no, most likely Jen and I will have, I mean, we'll try to be as disciplined as we can, but probably our list will be a little bit longer than what it will allow, so we'll bring that back and have some conversation here.
Well, also the, excuse me, may I speak?
Yes.
Um, the planner will also be able to give us an idea of how many hours for maybe some of the different scope of work, you know, how, how long they would think it would take, I mean, they first have to familiarize ourselves with our zoning bylaw and, and look at our scope and say, okay, I can do this in so many hours and this in so many hours and, and give us an idea of what would be the best use of our time money.
All right, yes, good, yeah, that, that will be very valuable because, as you say, they might have a better sense of how long it will take them to do things than what we would suspect. But very, very nice, very nice, bravo, and thank you town for voting on this, right? And the finance committee for supporting it and everybody for trying to.
Kudos to the finance committee really, because they had a tough job.
Yeah, yes, 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 yes. So our accessory bylaws work group, it is going to be happening, we have members appointed from the ZBA, planning board, select board, finance committee, the building commissioner, and then Chris will be on it also. May twenty-sixth will be our, our first meeting, I'm hope, I'm actually anticipating that we'll be, you know, potentially two or three meetings at the most, and having it be certainly valuable because this will be an opportunity for these members to bring forward what they think might be concerns and also to take back to their respective boards and committees, just as is done in CCI, so that we can in fact get some more feedback and public engagement, I, I am looking at them as helping flesh out the issues that this would not necess, this would not be a committee that is going to be rewriting the bylaws and sort of making, they'll be making suggestions for us as we then reconsider the bylaws. I will say, I attended today, skipping ahead into our committee reports, I attended today a citizens planning, citizens housing and planning association chapel meeting, making the case on affordable housing, and it was really quite sobering in terms of all the strategies that different towns are trying to employ to address basically the NIMBY, not in my backyard, issues, and some of the towns have been incredibly sophisticated in, in working for accessory apartments as well as affordable housing, and some, some of them with my success recently, Wellesley, Newton, good success, Brookline, no, I mean, those are very different towns from us, but anyway.
One, I'm not sure how to put this, on social media and also in person, there is a part of our town who is verently, you know, anti-rental and anti-not, you know, if you don't own property here, sort of, and I, I just want to, you know, sort of take a moment to recognize that that's part of our town too, that like we all, I mean, I, I don't speak for anybody else, wasn't aware of it, that people had really strong feelings against renters in this town, so, you know, I just wanted to put that out there that there's, there are vocal people who feel that way. So while we work on these things, I don't know, I just want to keep that in mind, that not everybody, you know.
Well, then isn't the challenge, as we're saying, we want to have community engagement and that means community engagement from, from everyone.
Sometimes people who have dissenting voices are less likely to say it, and so although I don't, I think that there's room for renters in our town, I think it's important to have it said that not everybody agrees with that and that some people are gonna, I, I don't know if they're gonna show up, but, you know, I think that's an important voice to hear too. But I want to say.
Well, I think again, for us to try to figure out how we can understand those issues also and try to address them.
For sure.
Can I just say, yeah, I, I mean, I'm on social media as well and I do monitor what goes on, I very rarely comment for things like that, but, you know, as far as I'm concerned, if, if there are individuals who are concerned about that, then they should really show up at meetings and instead of wasting their time putting negative comments on social media because I think it's really counterproductive to how we're trying to move forward.
I don't believe we have any other business, not anticipated in forty-eight hours, and unless Alex or anyone on Zoom has a public comment, please limit to two minutes, non-repetitive, no.
There's no one online.
Excuse me, hidden in the corners. Reports of seminars, meetings that people have gone to, start with, mainly going around Rachel, Kathy.
I was at an open space meeting this past week, so we are continuing to meet regularly, we are still working on big documents, many pages to few.
Thank you, and I'm also on our senior housing ad hoc committee and we're having, actually, should say this is an announcement, we're having a lot of difficulty getting good result or good feedback from a senior housing survey that just went out, it's for people fifty-five and older, many people are confusing this with a senior center survey that went out several months ago, and so we're having, at this point, it's only six percent response, so bravo again to Open Space for your, for the beating.
Where is it, where is it? Go to the transfer station and hand to people pieces of paper to tell them how to do this survey. That's what I would recommend, that's, that's part of why the open space committee.
Yeah.
Not to renters.
We're postcards, but in any event, I'll pass that on, Denise or?
No, I was just going to mention, so if you, you know, people who are confused, I know this has been posted, reposted because it was sent at, in a postcard and then there's a specific number on it, so they just don't want repetition, so for some reason someone wants to fill it out, they didn't get the postcard, you can get in touch with Lili and she can give you an identification number, it's not to find out who you are, it's just to keep track.
And that information is on the town website, yes, thank you.
And on Facebook.
Yes.
I mean, the town Facebook page.
Zuckerberg has our survey, right?
It works.
That's right. I also did actually today, or yes, I, last week, a CPTC webinar on overlay districts, which, you know, similar to what Chris was talking about early with this overlay district of these incentives, a couple of things that came forward is that, and that that overlay district seemed to be, I mean, this is presenting, the presenter saying that overlay districts are very attractive to developers, they like that, and that residential is the number one incentive developers look for, especially in underutilized town centers, they want to see residential as a, as an incentive and also.
As an incentive to building, I mean, as an incentive for them.
For zoning, for zoning, yes, for zoning regulations in underutilized town centers, if we, you know, mixed use, including the residential, is a very favorable incentive apparently for many developers. And then also the other piece of advice was to try to make it simple, the simpler the regulation, the more attractive it is to developers and the more likely it is to pass. What's it, oh gosh, I haven't heard how it is, but Montague had a, wow, what was there? I should remember what the zoning law was, and it was something like thirty-five pages, I mean, it was huge for their town meeting.
Wow, and they did just have their town meeting.
Pardon me?
Did they just have their town meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow, I forget, I think it might have been for, for some mixed, I'm not sure, I don't remember, yeah. It's like, I was old, thirty-five pages for one bylaw.
I think they had an overlay district, didn't they?
Maybe that was it, an overlay district for some type of housing.
Yeah, after about twenty minutes of one person speaking, I gave up.
Right, was it, it was for housing, it was for some kind of housing, right?
I like our two-minute. Well, was, I think the overlay district was getting too close to his property, I think, wasn't it, did you see that?
But it's overlay district for housing of some sort. It was a really memorable webinar.
Yeah, Rachel.
Okay, any other reports, oh yes, Denise.
No, I'll report on CCI, well, first of all, I think, what, I went to the climate forum, I can't remember whether I reported on that or not, but the climate forum, which I thought was really, really interesting, but what was even more interesting is that prior to that, Tim Hillchi from CCI wrote a letter, a very comprehensive letter on how we are not getting money that we should be getting here in Western Massachusetts, and he sent the letter, we sent the letter to, let's see, to Jim McGovern, to Richie Neal and to Karen Polito, and we CC'd Natalie and we CC'd Joe, and so what I did is I made copies of that letter and I also put the, the postcard of all the priorities that we've identified in CCI in an envelope and handed it to Joe and handed it to Natalie. To date, we've not heard anything back from them, then I also went to, and I think, at that, I think Carolyn had spoken to Joe at that meeting, you know, and, and talked to her about that, but still we haven't heard anything back to date, although they say they really support what we're doing, and then I also went to the Western Massachusetts Mass Municipal Association Conference and they were there, oh, maybe we sent that one, and, you know, Carolyn did speak, so I think what we, the plan is to actually invite Karen Polito and Jim McGovern separately out here and to talk about the disproportionate amount of infrastructure money that we have not gotten according to, you know, the state, I think it's like, I think we figured out something like, you know, if you look at the population of Western Mass, it's Handen, Hampshire, Franklin and Berkshire County, we are fourteen percent of the population in the state of Massachusetts, so we should also be getting an equal amount of infrastructure money, so that's what we're, that's the plan, and we'll be discussing that at CCI meeting.
See, keep it simple, right?
Certainly, you know, welcome to join us, I mean, that's an open meeting like everything else, but we are just going to keep pushing until we get money.
There we go, good, okay.
That's, that's, that's my report.
So mail, we had quite a bit of mail, we have had the requests for updates from Amber Gardens, the, the update for that is that basically to begin with, the host agreement still is being processed by the state, and so until the host agreement is processed and finalized by the state, then they cannot start any construction and have any reports back to us, so, but we are on their radar for a monthly report once that happens. In the course of sort of discussing about our reports. In the course of sort of discussing about our reports, one of the things that's come to light is that, if you think back to when Amber Gardens came to the planning board to transfer the permit from Sun's Mass to us, unfortunately, that decision was never written up or signed by the many parties that need to sign that. There's a question as to whether or not, since that happened quite a while ago, and now they're in the process of the host agreement, is it sort of moot, or, you know, what do we do with this sort of hanging legal thing that never happened? Casey, I guess, is checking on that. Jennifer, you're feeling that since it's already happened, I mean, it's already happening, but yes, do you, Jen?
Well, Casey and I talked about it quite a bit today, I'm having a harder time wrapping my head around it, but she says that the HCA has more validity or power, so to speak, over anything, so that has to be completed, and we will go through the processes of signing and filing the special permit after. So I couldn't quite, I don't quite get it, but that's what she says is the process, Casey, that is.
And we have to write up the decision to begin with, too.
It, it's, it's, it is being written, it has been written, she has it, it's just a matter of waiting for the HCA to be complete before.
HCA has a host community agreement.
Yes.
Okay, well, so that goes back on the pending list. We did receive today a piece of mail from a town resident, and then we do have some other mail from other communities, the Deerfield, a Deerfield resident who, from 46B Stillwater, who wants to begin some construction of an accessory apartment, and is requesting either a waiver or a change in the zoning, because they want to begin construction, so, so. So, may I have some suggestions on our response to this, right? I mean, first of all, thank you for contacting us, but.
Isn't that a ZBA? I mean, waivers are in the land of ZBA, not in the waiver, we're not in the waiver business.
I think she would, I, I think that what they were probably requesting is that we have a bylaw change, I think, more did.
That, I think, I think, the way it came through, it did sound like it was a request for waiver, and that isn't us, that just isn't our bailiwick, but if it came to us, maybe that's what it was more suggesting, this would be very nice if I could do this.
Well, it's interesting too, because they were noting, as is the case, that we do not, essentially don't have an accessory apartment bylaw for new, for new accessory apartments, so there's nothing to waive, really, right? So it really is, I mean, I, I would anticipate that I write them back, thank them for their suggestion, let them know that we're having this work group that we want to move as quickly as we can, but this would need to be approved by the town, and unfortunate, right, right, does that seem good? Okay. Remember what I said there. Let's see, otherwise, the few town, everybody, everybody's doing town meetings, and then, man, they've got all these public hearings going, and Greenfield, public hearing tomorrow on marijuana establishment setbacks and size in medium and high-density residential areas, also proposed moratorium on marijuana cultivation, pending possible zoning changes, so that's interesting. They're also having a public hearing on the 12th regarding some frontage for a home, a kennel license, a ground-mounted solar array, and a change in non-conforming use percentage for the, the non-conforming use, they're changing percentages between parking, the office, and retail. Conway is having a public hearing on the 10th, a special permit for 156-foot monopole wireless facility. There you go, yeah. Yeah, right, 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 monopole, and also a public hearing on their floodplain zoning bylaw, we did that a couple of years ago, probably could look at it again, but I don't think so. Wait, they did have a public hearing in April, April 26th on marijuana, looking at their definitions and their table of use. And Montague had a public hearing also on the 27th of April, looking at a accessory apartment on a detached garage, certainly something we're addressing in our work group, and also a conversion of a single-family home to a two-family dwelling, so some of that we're in the thick of also, and some of it we're not. Our next meeting in two weeks, kind of, two and a half weeks, kind of, less than that, the 19th of May, for our continued public hearing on the Plainfields Park, and then the 6th of June, moving forward. And Andrea Leibson has a parting note.
Has a question, well, has a question, on the 19th, the public hearing will continue, will that be early in the agenda?
It's going to be the agenda.
It's going to be the agenda, okay, thank you. I'm gonna be on the West Coast, so I have to deal with time change.
Thank you, yes, yes, thank you.
Yes, and no, I, I think we can devote the whole meeting to that.
Any other comments or questions? All right, and two minutes before nine, may I have a question? All right, Rachel Blaine.
Done, done and dusted. Oh, yes, yes, out, she's staying, she's staying till tomorrow, she's gonna swear, she's gonna.
Yes.
Yes, Annalise, I, thank you very much, everyone, meeting is adjourned.